It is 6:01 and the City Council is called to order. Mr. Mayor is not with us tonight. He has a bug and he decided he would not share it with all of us. So, we thank him for that, but we will miss him and I'm sure he is watching at home and taking good notes. So, will you all stand? And we'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Segur.
Thank you. If you'll bow your heads and pray, please. Dear God, thank you for the opportunity to serve Kerrville and for the many citizens, the volunteers, our staff that assist in making these new plans and ideas. Help us to protect the integrity of these new plans and work hard to make them happen. Thank you for our police who at any given moment may face life-altering situations and our firemen and women who work tirelessly to prevent and protect our homes and our city. Thank you for our servicemen and women who protect our country, both near and far, and give us wisdom and patience to deliberate what is best for Kerrville. Amen.
Leave in prayer and pledge now. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need to let everyone know that if you are interested in speaking on a topic this evening, be sure that you have signed up prior to that. And at this time, we will recognize Stuart and with some announcements.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman, for stepping into this role on such short notice. I know you only got the call, what, an hour ago, two hours ago?
Isn't right.
We appreciate you doing that. Just a few announcements tonight. We're going to end our Movies in the Park series. The Halloween movie month ends this Friday. All the others have been on Saturday, but this one is Friday because there's something else happening on Saturday. So, this Friday, we will close out with Monsters, Inc. We have had tremendous turnout at all of these. Fortunately, the weather has cooperated with virtually every one of them. And so, I would encourage you, if you get a chance, to come on out Friday night, enjoy a movie. It's a lot of fun, a lot of, it's a great crowd, a great community. And we are having it on Friday night because we have a new movie, I mean, a new event on Saturday and Sunday. Saturday night, we have Haunted Ghoul Pool. This is going to be out where the Olympic pool is. It's from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., but let me caution, if you have young kids, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. because at 8:00 p.m. it changes and it gets a little more scary. So, we don't want anybody to be up with nightmares and having some problems with that.
Why don't people buy eight?
So, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., it is family-friendly after that. I think we're kind of trying to turn up the scare factor a little bit. It's $5 entry fee. This is the first time we've done this, so looking forward to it. Tickets are on sale online at the Parks and Recreation Department, and they can also be purchased at the event. So, if you get to Saturday night or Saturday and Sunday night and you want something to do and you don't have a ticket, don't worry about it. You can get it out there. Then, next Thursday, I know that, I think this is the ninth year that we've done this, but this is Family Fright Night. It's a great place to come out and bring your little ones. We have tons of candy, tons of trick-or-treating games, bounce houses, music, and many more activities and festivities. Thursday, October 31st, 5:30 p.m. out at Louise Hayes Park. Huge crowd last year. Every year, it's gotten bigger. And of course, we're expecting a bigger crowd this year. So, a lot of fun, can't emphasize enough, it's a great family event. And want to remind everybody that we do have an election coming up on November 5th. One of the things that will be on the ballot is the city charter amendments, which have just been reviewed by a city charter review committee. They began, they were 19th of this year. They've gone through the entire document. I think there's 18 amendments on the ballot. So, that is going to be open for voting on November 5th. Early voting has already begun. We had two inserts in the last two weekends, papers talking about what you can expect to find on there. We also have a sample ballot online on the city's website. And I would encourage you, if you get a chance, to go out there and kind of familiarize yourself with it. It really makes a difference when you go into the ballot booth. I think there's 10 state propositions and then there's been the 18 amendments that we have to be voted on. And I think they're on page two of the sample ballot. So, y'all go on out and vote for that on November 5th. We can't wait to hear from you. That's about it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Do any of the council members have any announcements they would like to make?
I would. I would just like to say, I got the pleasure, I had the pleasure of playing the Scott Schoiner Golf Course today. And I just have to give a shout out to the crew there. They do a great job. They, they just was part, they were just part of the James Avery Invitational, which draws anywhere from 200, 300 men and their families and partners to our town. That was just a couple of weeks ago. So, it's a viable part of our community and I had the pleasure of just, the day was great. The weather was wonderful, but the course is in great shape. So, if you play golf, get out and support your municipal course.
Thank you. I'd just like to give a shout out to First United Methodist Church, Mount Wesley Light on the Hill, Methodist Health Ministries, and there was somebody else involved with the dental clinic that they held this past weekend, Friday and Saturday. I hope you saw the front page of the, I think it was the Saturday paper. Fantastic event. Free dental service to all, over, I think they had about 400 people. And it was just something else to walk into that gym and see all those dentists, all those technicians, and all those people being worked on. So, thank, we thank them and congratulations on a wonderful effort. At this time, we have our Visitors and Citizens Forum. Shelley?
We have three citizens.
Yes, I'm sorry, just a second, Shelley.
Go ahead. I just had one thing. I wanted to say thank you to Drew Paxton and Sheri Moser, or either one of them. No, they're not with us. Okay. But I just wanted to mention that we had a group of third graders come through City Hall last week and they did a great job of putting that together. And Mark McDaniel came in and everyone spoke to these third graders about Utopian Destination because they're planning their own city. And a shout out to the teachers for all of the things they already knew. And they will have subways and all kinds of public transportation and great fun in their cities. But also to the business, business owners of Humble Fork Cricket. And then Anne Overby came and gave them a tour of the Arcadia Theater before it was, before it was under construction. And the superintendent, Dr. Mark Faust, was there. So, it was just a great day and it was, it was a pleasure for me to be part of that. So, I just want to thank everyone that put that together, the teachers, the staff, and the business owners for making that a great experience.
Thank you. We might be able to use some of their ideas. All right. We'll proceed to the Visitors and Citizens Forum. And Shelley, do we have some speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have three citizen speakers.
Okay. George Broody?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Let me just say, just know that no discussion will take place and no action will be taken on these. And we do, will not respond to questions from them. We can refer questions to staff for follow-up. And just a reminder that everyone has four minutes to speak. So, who's first now? George Broody?
All right. George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. And this was addressed to all of council, actually technically the mayor. So, I hope he's watching at some point. So, what's in the name? Sometimes quite a bit. In the summer of 2018, the youth of Kerrville stepped up to create previously unwritten bylaws as well as name their own city board, the Kerrville Youth Advisory Council. They were saying to the city council, as well as the community at large, that they were here, they wished to be heard, and were willing to serve their community. Certainly all noble goals to be encouraged, for reasons that still boggle the mind. The kayak met with opposition from the highest levels of our government when trying to accomplish their few goals of community service. Fast forward to this summer, and we see the city council choosing to shut down this youth council and with it, the voice of the youth, in order to create in its place a new group to be called Kerrville Area Youth Leadership Council. Rather than advisory in nature, this new group is being touted as a leadership academy where the youth will be shown, explained, and presumably learn how city government is run here in Kerrville. This wholesale change has its good and bad points, but that decision is really not, is made already and not really my concern today. My concern is with what happened at the last council meeting of October 8th. Towards the end of the meeting, led by Mayor Blackburn, the city council showed how it intends to lead the youth by, in effect, ambushing an 18-year-old kid for no apparent reason, other than the fact this young man had the audacity to share a less than favorable opinion on social media. As elected officials, you've earned the right to have that bully pulpit that you all sit at, but that does not extend to just being a bully. And what you displayed last meeting was not becoming of, this was to the mayor, a man in your position, nor of a professed man of God. The Daily Times is running a series on Kerrville kind, and I listened to you, Mr. Mayor, give a sermon at Carver Park a few weeks back. And it was all about being kind and compassionate to your community, to include your workplace. Does your kindness only stretch to those of the citizens that agree with your every opinion, or shouldn't it apply to all? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broody. Next, Shelley?
Roman Garcia?
Roman Garcia, 934 Beacon Street. I'm here to address a violation of the procedure rules for Kerrville city boards. I submitted a request to the city for all the minutes of the Kerrville 2050 Code Review Committee. And a staff member responded to me that minutes were never created for the committee because it's an advisory board. However, I believe the committee has always been required to prepare and keep minutes of its meetings for two reasons. First, the city council adopted a resolution that created the committee to act as an advisory body. And that resolution requires the committee to comply with the procedure rules for Kerrville city boards. And those rules state that in an effort to increase the public's awareness of and participation in local government, the city council finds that the Open Meetings Act should govern all meetings of all boards appointed by the city council. This rule simply supplements the city charter, which requires the city council and its boards, commissions, and committees to comply fully with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Now, the act requires bodies to prepare and keep minutes or make a recording of each open meeting. And the minutes and recordings are public records and are be available for the public for inspection and copying upon request. The staff claims that the minutes don't have to be kept due to the committee's advisory status. However, the Attorney General has determined that certain advisory bodies that have control or supervision over public business or public policy and/or has its recommendations routinely adopted by its parent body are subject to the act. And in this case, the committee has been making decisions and recommendations to the city council regarding the city's code of ordinances. However, if that point's not held, and there's a second point that's just more straightforward. As I stated earlier, the committee is required to comply with the procedure rules for Kerrville city boards. And those rules provide that the actions that are taken by a board and a brief summary of the discussion of each topic shall be compiled into written minutes, which shall be reviewed and approved by the board. In addition, I'd like to note that, to the best of my knowledge, there have been seven advisory boards appointed by the city council that have maintained minutes. Those being the Food Service Advisory, Golf Course Advisory, Library Advisory, Parks and Recreation Advisory, Main Street Advisory, Senior Services Advisory, and the formal Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee. As I stated earlier, the city charter provides that this council and all of its boards fully comply with the Open Meetings Act. But to fully comply with something, or in this case, the act, would be to do so to the fullest extent, regardless of exceptions that may apply. And I want everybody to just think that the main reason why we all have a right to attend these meetings, why you must keep actions, a record of your actions, why you have to post what items you're going to consider for the public, and why we now have a right to give testimony is because of the Open Meetings Act. And those are the fundamental principles, to ensure that state and local governmental entities conduct business in a responsible manner and are transparent, open, and accountable to its citizens. So, why is it that all of the boards I mentioned, including other non-advisory boards, keep minutes and comply with the provisions, but not this committee? The Kerrville 2050 Code Review Committee has always been required to create and maintain its minutes. As a concerned citizen, I and any other member of the public are unable to obtain those minutes for information regarding the committee's deliberations, votes, and other actions that it takes or might have taken. And although the committee's meetings were open to the public, this is still, in a way, prevents the work of the government from being accessible and transparent to its people. So, I'm requesting that the city council takes action to ensure that those minutes are created and available for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Jaclyn Hall?
Hi there. I'm Jaclyn Hall. I work at 125 Lehman Drive for Congressman Chip Roy. I live in Ingram at 118 Independence Lane. So, basically, I was just here to introduce myself and let y'all know that the office is now open Monday through Friday in the mornings from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And I'm there if y'all have any questions or concerns or anything like that. So, feel free to reach out. Thanks so much.
Where did you throw them in?
Oh, sorry. 125 Lehman Drive, over by the, behind the DPS office.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
That concludes all the citizens signed up.
Thank you, Shelley. At this time, I would like to ask all of those who are on the, who were on the Charter Review Committee to come up in front of the podium here and we'll have a presentation. You're not all here tonight.
No. Yes. The numbers are not.
Before we, before we do this, this group has worked hard, long and hard. And the results of all that they have done will be on the ballot coming up in November. So, please encourage people to go and vote. It may seem like it's not very important, but they'll tell you that it is, will tell you that it is. They did a lot of cleaning up the, of things that, that's only looked at every five years. So, there's naturally things that need to be cleaned up and, and they did a super job. So, we appreciate what you did. Introduce yourselves and then, John, I'm going to have you tell the committee members who are not here. We've got a list. Me neither. So, we'll start with, we'll start with the chair.
Mike Segurman.
Michelle Yanis.
Greg Richards.
And.
Stephen Fine, Peggy McKay, and Brenda Gray.
Yes.
All the other three.
Yes. Well, we thank you, guys. How many hours did you put in?
I counted one time and then I got.
I think we were at 20, 22-plus.
Yeah. 22-plus in meetings, but there was a lot of work outside of meetings, reading.
It was very, very good. We have a citation for each, not a citation. We got a charter. We have a piece of paper for you to say thank you. And so, I would like to read what it says. City of Kerrville Resolution of Com- Commendation. Whereas each committee member has served as a member of the Charter Review Commission, the date of service beginning January 8, 2019, and whereas each committee member has served faithfully and dutifully on said board. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that each member be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Charter Review Commission, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville and the council and the staff, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community, passed and approved this 22nd day of October 2019. And they're not all signed. The mayor's not here. He has not signed it. So, we will get them to you, listeners, they are all signed. And I just want to say thank you and shake the hands of this council.
Thanks. I voted on Monday for those amendments. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Thank you, honey.
John, would you like to say a few words?
No.
Thank you.
How do you get some tempo inside, Michelle?
There you go. I can. Yes.
I was trying to get it. I looked for a body that I needed.
Michelle brings the average age way down.
Any of you like to say a few words?
Madam.
Surely, somebody's going to say something.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. And we will see you in five years.
Go vote.
And I'd like to recognize Jaleel there, the nephew of Michelle. Hey, Jaleel, thanks for being here to support your aunt tonight. We appreciate you being here.
Council, may I say something too?
Absolutely.
They probably put in twice or three times as many as the 22 hours that they calculated in meetings because basically every meeting, they gave us all homework, or they gave themselves all homework. And gosh darn, they would come back and they would have all of these provisions all, you know, mapped out and marked up. And they just did a human's effort. And I never fed them. I think I gave them water. But they really did a good job and they all brought different talents and different experience and just, it was a fun, fun time, fun exercise to go through.
And it could have been a very boring exercise. So, we do thank you. But we'll see you in five years, all right? All of you. At this time, we will move on to the consent agenda. And unless someone would like to have an item pulled, and I would like to have an item pulled, I would like to pull the very first one on the airport teehangers. We have someone here that I think would like to say a few words. So, if we can, let's pull that one off, but we will look at the rest of them. And Shelley, if you'll read the others. Does anyone want anything else pulled? Anyone from the?
We don't have anyone signed up except for one citizen for 4A.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we improve a consent agenda. Items 4, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? Please raise a hand to acknowledge. And it passes 4 to 1. All right. And Shelley, if you will read in the teehanger, Resolution 45, 2019.
Resolution number 45-2019, a resolution approving the construction of teehangers at the airport to include the provision of matching funds from the city for the project, authorizing the execution of various agreements related to the project, including a participation agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, designating the airport manager as the project representative, and authorizing the city manager to take any other action necessary for the project.
And our speakers?
We do have one speaker, Mark Moser.
Thanks very much. I'm Mark Moser, 634 Lower Trope Creek Road. I'm also currently the vice president of the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Board, which I've been involved with directly and indirectly for almost eight years now. And it's been interesting to watch the changes over the years. About 12 years ago, at the time Attorney General Abbott got involved and with the work of, hard work of the current city and county, and Attorney General, the board is disbanded and interlocal agreement was developed. And essentially, that means we have an independent board that runs independently. It's unique, it's a very unique airport that is owned by city and county both. It's not real common, but I see that as a strength. It's kind of like having two parties, you know? The answer is usually the right answer by the time you get to the answer. So, we've looked at this and we've had some strong leadership on this board. They treated it like a business. At the very beginning, about 12 years ago, the city and county were each contributing almost $450,000 just to keep the airport afloat. But you say, why would you do that? Well, I do know that the economic impact, according to the Texas Department of Transportation for 2018 was $38.3 million to our community. And that can be justified. There's a document, it's a public document. They do this every year for all the airports. So, you know, it's done on jobs, multipliers of money, payroll, as it goes through our community. But we look at this airport and we span out, where do we want to be in five years, 10 years, 20 years? We redid our strategic plan this year and we have a master plan. And the strategic plan was done, workshops, input from city, county, our, our, people that are inside the fence, our stakeholders inside the fence, our outside the fence stakeholders' residents. We did a lot of surveys, put a lot of work into this. If you don't know where you're going, you probably won't get there. So, we, we do know where we're going. We do know where we're going to be in, within five years and 10 years. And that's, that's somewhat of a fluid agreement too. So, we plan to revisit that on a regular basis. So, I do appreciate your input and all these workshops we've done very much. So, it's very, very much appreciated. We have a really strong board right now. We're all a little different. I see that as, as a benefit. We're all definitely type A. We all want to work very, very, very hard. We do work hard, even though we're not full-time executives there. We treat it like we are. We have a strong airport manager, just endless energy. But we're going in a really good direction. Now, get more specific about the teehangers. Texas is a block grant state. That means the federal government gives Texas a chunk of money and then Texas disperses it from there. This situation, 27 years ago, according to our, our Texas Transportation Director, the amount was about the same. So, we have to do, we're trying to do the same thing with less money each year. And the most money we can get from this block grant has been $150,000 a year. And that accumulates upwards of $600,000 after four years. And if you don't use it, we start losing $150,000 a year. So, we wait till we get the chunk, and it takes a chunk of money to do something. But again, we can do less with the money each time. I rolled it into about eight years ago and assisted them in the first use of this because we just did it up in Iowa. So, this is our round two. And this is just one more step in the placement. So, it's essentially, it's a 10% match and then we make up the rest of that $600,000 to build this teehanger project. And teehangers, because they don't allow it to use for commercial reasons. The teehangers are more for private reasons, which a lot of those private hangars are used by companies that would not be here if we didn't have an airport. And that only helps our economy. So, any questions?
I think in one of your meetings, you said you could lease up two or three teehangers right now with the waiting list that you have?
We have a waiting list with deposits of approximately 30 G-hangers, 30 pilots with $300 deposits. And from experience, you, I know that you don't like to hear you build or come, but I've seen zero waiting lists and 12 hangars go up and they're filled before they're done.
That's what I heard, yeah. Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that what you are asking from the city is what you are also getting from the county.
That is correct.
So, we're doing this together.
That is correct. And also, it's important to note that this, a lot of these planes that come in are corporately owned and that helps our property taxes.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 45-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, please acknowledge by a raising of a hand. All in, all in favor have said yes, so we will consider that passed. Thank you. All right. That is the end of the consent agenda and we will move to number five, the first reading of an ordinance. And Shelley, if you'll read that in for us.
Ordinance 2019-18, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $2,435,000 in a principal amount of City of Kerrville, Texas general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2019, authorizing the sale thereof pursuant to a negotiated underwriting and competitive sale or private placement, approving and authorizing the execution of all instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to certain city officials to determine the method of sale, to approve all final terms with respect to the sale of the bonds, to select a paying agent, registrar, and an escrow agent or deposit agent, and approve related agreements, and to approve other related matters in calling certain obligations for redemption.
All right. Good evening. And I would like to just remind you that this is a bond ordinance, so it's a little bit different than other ordinances in that it is effective with one reading, according to a local government code or Texas government code. And I'm here tonight to introduce you to our financial advisor, Anna Verentraken from Hilltop Securities. And she's going to give you an update on the bond refunding opportunity that we discussed at the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, council members, it's a pleasure to be back before you. As you may recall, the last time we did talk about the refunding and we noted that the next step, if we were given guidance, was for me to be back this evening to, to formally begin the process. I have the same charts, but I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them because they're slightly improved. It was a 2.66 when I was here last. It's a 2.59% this time. I will tell you, though, that we did see the end of last week and I had a pricing this morning and investors are pushing back a little bit. So, we did see interest rates go up a couple of basis points, but we see that in the market. And one of the reasons is you'll remember when we look at it, we show the impact at market rates in plus twenty-five because we do know that there's volatility in the market between now and when we would be able to price. So as a reminder, the bonds that we are looking at that are callable are the 2011 A certificates of obligation that are in an amount of $2,435, coupons ranging from 2% to 3.5%. And our call date is February fifteenth, 2020. So going back and looking at an update of the numbers, which are on slide eight, we, if we look at the current market rates, we still are about gross savings of $111,000. Average annual savings in the key years where we're targeting about $43,000. On a present value basis, it's $107,000. And a present value benefit of 4.4%. As I noted, these numbers are just within like a couple of thousand dollars of when I was here last time. If we add the 25 basis points, your gross savings declined to $74,000. Those average annual in those two key years is about $25,000. And on a present value basis, it's just under $72,000. And the present value benefit is 2.954. I want to highlight that because I think that'll come back when we look at what the suggested parameters are. As I mentioned last time, the whole ability and the whole rationale for considering a parameters bond sell ordinance is to provide flexibility. Unlike a new money transaction where sometimes you just need to access the market at whatever the rate is at that time because you need the funds for construction, refundings are very different. They are very dependent upon what the interest rate market is at the time of issuance. And so most of our cities that undertake refundings do a parameters bond sell ordinance. It allows us to go day-to-day and flexible. And as I noted last time, we, we highlight what we call the four corners of the transaction. Minimum savings, maximum interest rate, maximum final maturity, and maximum par amount. And then we delegate that to the city manager, mayor, and/or the chief financial officer. So for your consideration this evening, the particular parameters that we suggest, minimum savings threshold for the refunding, 2.5%. Even with 25 basis points, we're right under 3%. Maximum true interest cost is 3.5. The maximum principal amount is the amount of bonds that are callable, $2,435. The maximum final maturity date is February fifteenth, 2031. We are not proposing to restructure this at all or extend the debt. We are just optimizing the savings within the existing amortization. As noted last time, it is very common for delegation authorities to only be in effect for six months. If something happens and the market conditions do not present themselves during the six-month period, then we would come back to you again and give you a briefing and make a determination if it makes sense to extend it at that time. And as noted, we'd like to have the delegation authority be to the mayor, city manager, and/or chief financial officer. We have also a highlight now of the proposed timetable of events for your consideration. So we have, if you decide to move forward for this evening, the consideration of the bond ordinance. We would send the official statement to Standard and Poor's. And as noted, our expectations, because we went through an extremely comprehensive and detailed process last time, our hope is that this could be done very quickly and very efficiently without a full conference call. We will prefile the documents with the Attorney General's office. We anticipate pricing on or about Tuesday, December third, and having this close on or about Wednesday, December eighteenth, before the end of the calendar year. So in summary, we are still in a, in a historically low, near historic, all-time historic low interest rate environment. The city has the opportunity to achieve debt service savings through a refinancing of your bonds to have lower interest rates. If the city council is interested in pursuing a refinancing of the 2011 A certificates, then you will take under consideration the parameters ordinance before you this evening. You will confirm that the parameters that I've outlined are appropriate. They're included in there for your consideration. They, they could be modified if needed. We will proceed with the proposed timetable events where I highlighted the key dates. And we will continue to monitor the municipal bond interest rates to see what's happening in the market and hopefully be able to proceed as scheduled. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to make sure, I think I do, I just want to clarify. So what you're proposing, if we go forward with that, the city's net savings is somewhere between $75,000 and $111,000. And that's net. There's no other commissions, fees. That's the bottom line to the city. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All of the costs of issuance have already been embedded into that number and that is after all of them.
Right. So you were giving us the high and the low of what our parameters were, like on slide eight and nine, is that correct?
Well, on slide eight and nine, I mean, our, our, we cannot predict what's going to happen with the market. But, but we were thinking if, if we have a 25 basis point cushion, that generally frames it. Certainly, if it is way more than 25 basis points, I will likely be back before you to discuss it before we would consider moving forward. That's one of the reasons, too, that we are suggesting that we move forward expeditiously in order to try to capture the market savings at this point in time.
So there's not a lot of downside to this proposal, is what I'm hearing?
No, sir.
We're not adding any principal. We're not extending the maturity date. We're just simply saving money.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
So the 2.59% could stay that way or go up or down between now and December third, basically?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. That's okay. I mean, hopefully it'll go down.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Thank you.
Anne, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, any speakers signed up?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance two oh one nine dash one A.
A second.
Second. And if you will all acknowledge by a raising of a hand, and it passes four zero. Thank you.
You need to explain that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to five B, an ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year 2019. And if you will read that in for us, Shelley?
Ordinance number 2019 dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year 2019 to authorize the transfer of funds between different funds to account for a general fund balance and to make other amendments as provided herein. And also, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Thank you. Amy?
Okay. Tonight, we are going to be talking about ordinance to amend our fiscal year nineteen budget. So this is our budget year that just wrapped up on September thirtieth. And then I'm also going to give you a few highlights of where we stand as of the end of the year. We're still in the process of closing our books for the year, but give you a quick update there. So consistent with prior years, we usually do this right after year end. The finance department will bring forward a budget amendment to account for, you know, things that happened during the year that, that were not originally considered during the budget. And most of these things you're already been aware of, but this takes the official step of amending the budget for them. And I'm going to go through, oops, these quickly. So the biggest items on the budget amendment are some transfers from our general fund to our general capital projects fund. So the first one relates to streets projects. As you know, we are in the process of finishing up the Hill Country Drive project, I think this week. And the Slurry Seal project wrapped up the first week of October. Both of those were projects that we had anticipated finishing in fiscal year nineteen before September thirtieth. But we had some contractor delays and that kind of thing. And so they pushed into October a little bit. So we want to use our fiscal year 2019 operating budget from the Streets Department to pay for this, even though we're paying for it in October. So we're proposing moving $350,000 from the general fund to the general capital projects fund where we can set up this street maintenance project and pay using those 2019 operating dollars. And just to be clear, this doesn't change anything about our 2020 budget for streets maintenance. It'll still be spent in full. This is just finishing up 2019 due to some timing differences. We also are proposing moving $90,000 from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the Olympic Pool Replaster Project. So that's a project that council approved in August. You know, we have a fifty-year-old pool that was drained and found some cracks and some emergency repairs that needed to be done before we could open again for the next season. So the Parks Department has had some savings in their operating budget. They've had some staffing vacancies and they have some money left in their operating budget that they would like to use toward that project. So $90,000 there. And then the last part of it is $117,000 towards the airport project. So you just heard about the airport project. And we have a portion of that budgeted in 2020. And then we have some remaining funds, unspent operating budget in 2019 that we'd also like to use. So we'd be transferring that to the capital projects fund as well. And then the other things are a little bit smaller. So we have special revenue funds. Those are funds, separate funds where money comes from particular sources and can only be used for very specific things. So we have one called PEG. I believe it's Public Education and Government, something like that. So this is a, some franchise type fee money that we get that has to be used for basically like public information. We can broadcast council meetings, do upgrades to equipment in council chambers, that kind of thing with this money. And one of the things that council requested during this past year was to add a closed captioning system through Granicus, our software provider. And we have money available in that special revenue fund. It just wasn't budgeted. So this is going back and adding $12,000 in budgeted expenditure for that closed captioning. Then we also have a separate fund called the Insurance Reserve Fund. So this is a fund that all of our like property damage, property loss goes through. And, you know, most of it is insured through our policies with TML. But everything goes through this separate fund. And that's one that we never know how to budget, what the expenditures are going to be because we don't know what kind of, you know, losses we will incur during the year. So we've had some losses related to mold damage in our Development Services Department, replacing nets at the golf courses and legal services that were not originally anticipated. So this is just authorizing expenditures for those. We have fund balance in that Insurance Reserve Fund to cover these expenditures. And then finally, in our Development Services Fund, we had initially anticipated doing the plan review for KISD in-house. And we've had some staffing changes. And so we decided that we're actually going to outsource that review. And so this is authorizing the expenditure for the outsourced plan review for the new middle school. On this one, we're also increasing revenue by that same amount because this isn't something that we're losing money on. We actually just pass the cost through to KISD as part of that fee. All right. So those are the...
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
On the $12,000 for the closed captioning, I'm assuming that's an annual?
It is. And so it is budgeted as part of the regular 2020 budget. Yeah, it just wasn't budgeted in 2019.
Will that still come from those?
Yes. It will come from that PEG Special Revenue Fund.
Thank you.
And then the, on the Insurance Reserve Fund, the $93,000. So can you explain that that's an expenditure, but we're going to, we're going to recapture the cost of that? Or how does that work?
So, well, a couple of things. So, you know, expenditures have to be appropriated by council. And so in the Insurance Reserve Fund every year, we have to try to guess like, you know, okay, how much are, are we going to, you know, how many accidents are we going to have? How much loss are we going to have? And so we, this is a real common one that we usually have a budget amendment related to because we don't know what's going to happen during the year. So, so we put in just a, you know, a base amount for some property repair kind of thing. But then we actually had more happen this year than what we had budgeted. So we're coming back and asking for those expenditures to be actually approved by council. And Kim Meismer is here so she can answer more specific insurance questions. But basically, if, if the loss is covered through our, our insurance policies with TML, then when we receive the, the claim from TML, it would go into that insurance fund. And then the claim is, or the damages are actually fixed using money from that insurance fund as well. So it stays, you know, separate. And, you know, that can only be used for like property damage claims from that fund. And, and it, it can kind of overlap years, you know, something. We may get an insurance settlement in September but not do the repair until October. And because it's in that special revenue fund, we can isolate those things easier that way. Anything to add there?
We also have deductibles associated with claims. So we have those deductibles to pay. And in particular, on the Development Services, the mold damage, whenever we had the, we had a flood and water gun into there, the adjusters came out and found that there was a lot more damage, but it wasn't damage from that event. It was damage from previous events. So those, those things weren't covered. We had some coverage and then some not covered. So... Anything else in particular?
Any other questions?
No.
Anyone?
Thank you, Kim.
All right. I'm going to move on to a little bit of an update for the year end. So I know it seems like it's October twenty-second and we should be done closing the year, but we're not quite done closing the year yet. And we have to do a lot of extra things at the end of the year to, and we'll have our books audited in a couple of weeks. So we'll be done with everything then. But so I'm going to give you as of today, where do things stand? But just know that there's still some more year-end adjustments to, to come in. On the general fund, a few highlights there. So revenue amounts won't be finalized until November. But as of right now, we're $218,000 better than what we budgeted. So that's yay for that. Very good. And primarily, that's related to sales tax, which we've been looking at all year. And sales tax came in $216,000 better than what our budget was for the year. So that's putting us at 3.1% better than budget compared to the prior year. It's up 5% from the prior year. So very strong numbers there. I also wanted to highlight the recreation revenue. Our Parks Department really did a great job this year and they actually had revenue that was $81,000 higher than what their budget was. And that's primarily coming from KSP, but also aquatics programs and parks and rec programs to add to that number as well. On the expenditure side, so if this budget amendment is approved, then the expenditures would be right at budget. We'd be, we'd have $30,000 left of our, you know, $27 million that was originally budgeted. So we've had some savings. We've had some vacancies primarily in our police department and parks. Obviously, personnel is, y'all learned about this in your budget workshop, personnel is our biggest cost. And so when we have staffing vacancies, that creates some budget savings. And we're hoping to use some of that unspent operating money for cash funding of capital projects. And then we talked about the street maintenance. Moving on to the water fund. This one's not as fun. Our operating revenues will not be final until November, but as of right now, $950,000 under budget on the revenues. There are a few adjustments that are coming in because we bill looking backwards. So in October, we're actually billing for water that was consumed in September. So this, these are some of the year-end adjustments we have to make. So that's going to give us about $140,000 more to revenue. So it'll help a little bit. But still, it was a very hard year operationally, which we've been talking about all year and made some changes to our fee structure and that kind of thing that we hope will address it next year as well. But we, on the positive side, we have had some operational savings. And so we don't, we're not looking at a $950,000 loss for the year. Instead, right now, three, or $521,000 is our operating loss. We think that's going to go down some, probably more like $400,000 once we get everything in. But we've had some savings due to some staffing vacancies, particularly in our water distribution department. That's also led to some lower-than-budgeted maintenance costs because we didn't have as many people doing maintenance. And we've had some lower-than-budget chemical costs, especially at our water production facility because they haven't been making, you know, treating as much water this year. And then we had talked previously about doing a $100,000 transfer from the water fund to the asset replacement fund. And at this point, we have not booked that. We've said, okay, we need to keep that $100,000 in the operating fund. And there's not going to be surplus left to do that. So we've taken that out. So that's not included as an expenditure.
Can we report on that question as I join, come back down the road and haunt us?
We are fine next year as far as what we have appropriated in our asset replacement fund for expenditures next year. So, so we're in good shape there. But certainly, yeah, we need to be looking at transfers to asset replacement every year. And we did transfer some to asset replacement this year. We just were trying to, we had some surplus last year and we were going to transfer some of the surplus from last year, but we ended up eating up our surplus this year because of the current conditions. So, but yes, certainly going forward, it's, you know, we anticipate needing transfers to asset replacement every year. And we did make a budgeted transfer. We just were not able to make the, the extra transfer. And we did make a budgeted transfer, we just were not able to make the, the extra transfer that we were hoping to do with surplus funds, so.
I have a question. So is there, should we be budgeting a different estimate on? I know we don't have a Farmer's Almanac that we can bank on, but it looks like we really overestimated what we thought we would sell in water, because of the weather. So would we make adjustments to that perhaps in the future?
And we have, and it was very helpful to go through the rate study process this year. One thing that was actually good to hear is, we, we usually do our budgeting assuming an average rainfall year. And the, the rate study consultants confirmed that, yeah, that is what you do. You assume an average year, you don't assume a super wet year, assume a super dry year. You know, that's the best you can do is assume an average year. So, so there is that, but they helped us validate our assumptions for the 2020 budget. So it was good to have that extra set of eyes and a different model looking at it. And then as you'll remember, we changed our utility rate structure in 2020 to make it a little bit more fixed and less variable. So it's less dependent on, you know, the volatility related to rainfall. It's still, it's still volatile, but, but we were hoping to address that particular issue for sure. Yes.
And the other thing I was curious about is the staffing vacancies, wouldn't that be something that we'd hope to change? Because, you know, obviously, we're probably soliciting a person for those vacancies. So can we really bank on that as a savings for a long period of time, or like a quarter? I would think the vacancies would be...
Yeah, those were actual vacancies that happened during the year, so it's not for next year.
Okay.
It was the actual ones that happened.
So that happened, and we can already take that as a credit.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, but you're right, it, it's, those are very difficult to predict. We do build a little bit, we have $50,000 worth of staffing vacancies built into the 2020 budget. But, but yeah, you know, it just depends.
So that, that's past tense?
Yes, but those have actually occurred, yes.
Okay.
I never shared with, with, with you guys, but when Gary and I went to a council training, actually, one of the things when we were talking about the budgeting process was stated very clearly, cities need to start looking at changing the rate structure for their water. And we had just finished the water study, I told Gary that we should be teaching that class, because we had our...
When do we start?
Yeah, so just another kudos to the city for being ahead of the curve when it comes to looking at how, how we operate in a fiscally, not just conservative, but you know, sustainable way, so.
Thank you, yeah. And yes, I thought we got a lot of really good information from that rate study, and it's definitely helpful to have that outside look as well, so.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep, and then a couple of, a couple more funds. So Hotel Occupancy Tax continues strong, they finished $103,000 better than budget on revenues. So $1.4 million in Hotel Occupancy Tax for the year, so very strong there. And then last, the Golf Fund, that we had a nice plug for earlier. So Golf is a little bit under budget on their revenues. They also didn't spend all of their operating expense budget, so, so that's helpful. So they're looking at an operating loss of $46,000 at this point. And one thing to note is, you know, when you look at our CAFR, that has non-cash adjustments in it, like for pension and depreciation and some things like that. So the numbers look a little different, so, but we're looking at, looking at it more from a cash basis, just operations, $46,000 loss there.
It's actually better than I thought it was gonna be.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Are there any further comments or questions from the council before we call our speaker? Kim, you have one? You have anything? No. Shelley, who is our speaker?
Clayson Lambert.
Clayson Lambert, 673 Town Creek, Kerrville. I was prepared to come here and, and ask a number of questions of you tonight, but I've been told I can't do that. So I'm gonna have to reformat what I was gonna tell you. And I'm gonna start out with a little story. Last summer, I guess it was, I was over in a part of town that I don't frequent. I was going across the Guadalupe Bridge from Papa John's over towards the VA. And I had several other people in the car, and the one on the passenger side was looking out the window. And he said, "Oh my gosh, you won't believe this." And I stretched as far as I could and had to kind of throw my seatbelt over and looked. And everyone in the car cracked up when we saw that the water reuse lines were installed about 18 inches above the regular river level going across there. Someone in the back said, "This reminds me of the, the joke about the guy in New York coming up with piccotti sauce when they were doing the paste thing." He said, "That had to be somebody that was not from the hill country that would run those pipes right there." So the conversation went on, and, and over the months, of course, they got washed out in October. And over the months, a number of my friends and neighbors have said, you know, "Keep an eye on that, let's make sure that the city doesn't end up having to pay for that, because the engineering on that was just pathetic." So when I noticed on the budget that you had a $14,000 legal fee for something having to do with, with that, that prompted a number of friends to say, "We'll go up there and ask some questions." Well, I can't ask those questions tonight, so I'm gonna put them in a different format. If I was gonna ask you those questions, they would be, "Who engineered the reuse line across the river?" And we were told at some point in the past that whoever was responsible for that would be the one that would have to, to pay for that, and, and not the city taxpayers. Did the city sign off on that? Did another engineering firm sign off on it? Was there a settlement on the flood damage? And did it cover all of the loss, such that it can now be put back in appropriate manner? And if there's a delta in the cost from getting reimbursed from the bad design and putting those pipes up where they should be under the bridge, is that a cost that's gonna have to be incurred by the city or by the people that get the benefit of that water? But I can't ask those questions. But, so I will ask you this, or ask you to do a favor for us. I know this is a first reading on this, and if you would please, since you're the interface between the citizens and the way that our tax money is spent in guiding the, the city government, if you would look into that, you may have the answer to all of these already. But, but please know that there's a lot of concern about that and talk about that out there. We don't, we don't want the city to get hammered, because somebody just had a ridiculous engineering design. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mike or EA, do you have anything you would like to respond?
Sure, so I think to answer a few of the questions that are there, it is an ongoing investigative matter that we're in the process of, that has spanned across a couple of different fiscal years. As Amy mentioned before, some of those expenses occurred in last fiscal year. The, the issue, the investigative issue is, is ongoing though. And so obviously, we have to pay legal fees when the legal fees come due. You know, hopefully, we will be able to recur those legal fees in, in the future, given the recourses that we have. I will say that in regards to the general infrastructure replacement, again, we did seek, and sought, and got, received a $1 million Disaster Recovery Fund from the state. So, you know, at this point, we're, we are net positive and actually moving forward with engineering to place that in a different manner.
Does that answer some of your questions, Mr. Lambert?
It, it does for the most part. The one question that it leaves unanswered is, is the responsible party for this having to pay? Getting a million dollars from Disaster Relief Fund is great, but at the end of the day, people need to be accountable for it.
Well, so that, that's one of the ongoing...
That's still ongoing, so, to be, to be...
Excuse me, as a council member, it's important that, for me to say that we are aware of it, and we are monitoring it. It's not like, it's just like, oh, it's gonna go away. It's, it's, it's not something we can talk about, because of the litigation potential. So in, in open session, it's difficult, but trust me that we are aware of it and we're paying close attention to it.
Well, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, and I appreciate it.
And your questions have been our concerns also, so. Alright, any other comments or questions from council? Alright, do we hear, do I hear a motion on item 5B?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2019-25, on the first reading.
Second.
Second, thank you. And if you will please acknowledge by the raising of a hand. Okay, thank you very much, and it passes for zero. Alright, we shall move on to an ordinance abandoning a public right-of-way. This is the second reading, Jeremel?
Shelley wants to read it.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Shelley, if you'll read it in first.
And Councilmember Cochran Recru- recused himself.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance number 2019-24, second reading. An ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating all right, title and interest in a portion of the public right-of-way, consisting of approximately 3,148 square feet of an unimproved portion of an alley that extends between G Street and its intersection with H Street and Broadway, State Highway 27. Said alley located between Water Street to the south and Broadway to the north and out of the Joseph A. Tavi's addition, a subdivision within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas pursuant to the platte recorded in volume P, page 16 of the platte property records of Kerr County, Texas, and located within the City of Kerrville, Texas on properties known as 1701 and 1715 Broadway. Finding that said portion is not required for future use as a public street, ordering recording, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up to speak.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
This is the second reading for this particular item. We have a picture up there, it's requested from the last council meeting. We show the current status of the property as it exists today, with Monroe's on the, on the left-hand side, and then the alleyway as it splits the different properties as it's going through. I have some different pictures here as well, just to show you a different perspective. This is G Street looking southwest. I also have G Street looking south right into the alleyway itself. This is just another picture, another angle looking into the parking lot itself. And then from the other side of where the automotive shop is, where that alleyway would begin from Broadway looking north. And then across Broadway looking north as well. So these are just some of the pictures that are there. And again, it is, we would consider in the best interest of the city to vacate our easement rights for this particular item.
Okay, council, do you have any questions or comments before we hear our speaker? This is the second time we've looked at it, so we...
Good pictures, by the way, though. I like the current picture, Miss.
Shelley, who is our speaker?
George Brudy.
George Brudy, 1616 Glen Road. So if you could put that picture back up, and thank you for doing that. I wish you'd known you'd bring it, because I brought colored pictures, but it was just that. So we'll get to it in a minute. So first thing, I just wanna clear up a few, I would say, misrepresentations or faults or whatever made the first reading. The one was that the right-of-way is unimproved. I think there was a misunderstanding of what I meant when I suggested that, which is, the city hasn't improved the right-of-way. But if you see at the top, which is the G Street side, that's a parking lot, crushed granite material has been laid on top of it. And then down at the bottom, the H Street side, or whatever you wanna call that, you can see an overhang from a carportish type thing that's, that's built across it. And which makes that alley, I think, what's been going on, is people have been driving out a little earlier, but anyways. And then the, the right-of-way is no longer being used. Again, in that picture, you can see the dumpsters behind, I think it's the Market, East End Market. The, the alley's being used for their dumpster drop and pickup at that spot. And when you drive over there, you can see that. And then Mr. Stringer asked how the interest in the land was being conveyed, and he was told it is not being conveyed. The city was simply abandoning an easement. When in reality, we are conveying all our interest in the land to the adjacent property owners. So there is a conveyance going on. And, and the city says it can't sell an easement, when in fact, an easement is an interest in land, and the IRS considers the conveyance of any interest, including the release of easements, as, as a sale. The only question that's left unanswered is, what is the value of such that, such a conveyance? And that's IRS Publication 544, if you're wondering where that's coming from. So it leads us back to why we wouldn't be selling this property or selling our interest. It is a sale, why we're putting a value on it? And it gets down to kind of, why don't we do things the same as we've been doing them? Most recently, we just sold H Street in the alley that is kind of connected to it. And we sold it for a pri-, we went out for an appraisal, we got an appraisal, we put a value on it, and we deducted and stuff like that. We did the same thing with a...
Can I mention something, George? Just so I don't forget. So the alleyway on the HEB was actually owned by the city, like the alley was, was city property.
Correct.
This is, this is different, and, and this is an, an easement's different than fee simple ownership of property. So just to make that differentiation between the two.
Right, so it, it's different on paper. Number one, we didn't actually get told whether the, the H Street alley was owned by the city or just...
It was.
Okay, well, we didn't get told that, but in any case, the IRS aspect of things, that the sale, whether it's a ownership or you're just conveying an eas-, or abandoning an easement, is still considered a sale, because you have an interest in that property, and it has a value to it. Both to the city as the owner or the accessible part of that easement, as well as to who's ultimately going to receive it.
Right, and I would say to that, that when you have an easement, you're charged with maintaining that easement. So there's a cost associated with that as well.
In theory.
You don't own the, you don't own the land, but it's your job to maintain the easement that you've acquired.
In theory.
In theory, though, that's, that's how...
If you look at that alley, we haven't been.
Well, if it hasn't been asked to be maintained, then that's one thing, but there's a...
So we're abandoning something that didn't cost us anything, basically. We haven't been paying, we haven't been costing anything on the maintenance. So ultimately, we have a value invested in the right-of-way, and we're abandoning it, and we're not selling it. We didn't put the value on it. And if there is a sale that's done in the city, if, if it truly is accepted that it's a sale, then the, the Texas Local Government Code outlines how you go about selling property. And so that's basically what it got down to. And so, again, it appears that HEB twice, and Crenwell he wants, have gotten right-of-ways where they sold them. And the only people getting them, given to them, are the development group right here.
Well, I, can I make a suggestion and, and then talk to, to my case, if he has any other comments? But I will tell you, just in what I know, let me just give you an example, right? So there are lines that K-Pub puts up, a utility company. And, and it happens that there is someone that wants to purchase a piece of property that has a utility line on that property, and they don't want that there, they don't want K-Pub coming in, but the lines have already been run, so K-Pub doesn't need that anymore. So it's very common that K-Pub will abandon that easement, and there's no fee associated with that. They don't need it, it's just an easement to run utility lines, but they don't need, they don't need to have it, so...
K-Pub's not governed by the government code. So my, my request was essentially, though, to not actually stop everything. It was to get our questions answered before you close off on it. I'm not expecting you to do it, that's what I was coming to request.
Gotcha. Mike, do you, yes, Mike, do you have anything to add?
This is, this is an abandonment of, of an interest that Mr. Brudy made the argument that it is improved. Well, it's not improved for an alley purpose. Doesn't look like we've, we've done that in a, in a long period of time. The ownership is certainly not questionable, but came into the city's possession by virtue of an annexation. So we've never paid for this or improved it in any shape or form. Looks like H Street and certainly Rodriguez Street, to the questions or the examples that Mr. Brudy raised, tho-, those were both paved, streets in the middle of town. Larger interest than this, that we thought an appraisal would be appropriate. Here, we think actually an appraisal would cost much more than the actual value of the, our right, so. So that, that's our recommendation, is to abandon, vacate this. Because it gets us really, truly off our books, we're no longer insuring it. We're no longer responsible for anything that happens on it. And we, our staff doesn't believe we'll ever use it for an alley, nor would it be safe to do so.
We think we're doing what is right and appropriate, Mr. Broody. Thank you for your comments. Any further questions or comments from council? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the abandonment documentation.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor, if you will acknowledge by the raising of a hand? And it passes 3-0. And would someone want to tell Gary that he can come back in?
Is it possible to ask a question on this issue? Or is it too late?
Well, as if it's a short one.
The question is, is to my case, would our interest in that property make us liable if something happened on that property on our easement? If someone got killed, if someone got, fell, if someone, would the city be liable for any lawsuits or anything if, by, by having interest in that easement?
You know, it's, it's a fact-intensive inquiry, whether we're liable or not. It's, it's good that we're no longer going to be.
That was my point. It, it's good that we're no longer having interest in that easement, but now we're not responsible for anything that happens on it.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number seven, 7A, Senior Citizens Advisory Board. And we have eight slots, our positions that are available. And I believe, do we have six or four applications that you want to consider? Do you have a recommendation?
Well, let's see, we have applications from one, two, three, four, is all I think. And I would make a motion that, well, I would recommend that we appoint the four that have Susan Eklund, Waverly Jones, Rebecca Pizor, and Sandra Yorberl.
Do I hear a second for those appointments?
Second then.
And will you please acknowledge by the raising of a hand? All right, we have appointed four people.
Okay, did you get my email about the other two?
I, wait, I got it. I don't know if, if, I don't think they did to be considered tonight.
Okay.
So we'll just consider those that everyone has seen. Okay. All right. That moves us on to 7B, appointments to planning and zoning. And does the council have a preference as to what they would like to do?
I'd like to take that to executive session, please.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We need to cite 551.074. If you'll add that here.
I'd like to take it to executive session via section 551.074, Personnel Matters.
Okay, and a second to that?
I'll second it.
And if you will please acknowledge by the raising of a hand? All right, we will move into executive session at 7:15 PM. All right, we are back in session at 7:41 PM. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do. Did you want to make a mention about, we only covered one?
I will.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion for the two openings that we have on planning and zoning that we appoint David Litzkam and Cliff Tuttle.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who?
Cliff Tuttle, and you know David.
If you will please acknowledge, we do have a second.
We have, you did have a second.
Who seconded again?
Gary.
Gary seconded, okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Please acknowledge by the raising of a hand? And we have four, four. Does that make sense? Four, four.
Or four? Four, zero, four, zero.
All right, thank you, everybody. And we will make a note that we are not, we did not and will not go into executive, executive session for the Lotus Pier Recovery LLC. There was no information to be shared there. And unless council has something for.
I would like to just talk to the mayor who I was going to tonight about the number of committee members on the senior advisory committee. It was 16, and it just seems to be hard to keep 16 on the board. So maybe future agenda item would be the number of the, that's how many applicants we had. That's why we went with it. But now we've had like eight drop out, so maybe 10 is a more realistic, just future discussion.
All right, anything else from anybody?
Ma'am.
One last parting comment?
Oh, Astros.
We will. Adjourn this meeting at 7:43 PM.